Good evening. My name is Greg Noche and I along with Mayor Protam Jeff Casper like to welcome everyone here to the District Three Citizen Input Meeting for the Charter Review Committee. We're here tonight to receive citizen input regarding possible city charter amendments. If you wish to speak, please complete a registration card. They're located by the sign-in sheet back there right behind Councilman Archer. And provide it to any one of our city staff members for the most part oriented over here to the left and then Sonya over to the right or my right, the audience's left. And once they have those registration cards, they'll bring them to us and we'll invite you up here to speak. When you do approach the podium, we would like to remind you that we're trying to keep a pretty accurate record of who's speaking. So we'd like for you to recite your name and your address and then you're free to speak. We are limiting comments to five minutes. Some of the committee members may have questions for you. If you don't want to answer any questions or don't want to take questions, then just indicate that to us and obviously we'll respect that. We've had a great dialogue and conversation so far as we've had, I guess this is our third meeting now? Yeah. And so, and the committee's been working pretty diligent. We had some surveys, drafts that we circulated and those kind of all came in during different hours of the day today and so everybody's working hard, everybody did their homework, everybody gets an A. Right, Dr. Shepherd?
Yes.
All right. So without any further ado, we will basically pass the mic down, let everybody introduce themselves and then we will proceed with our first speaker.
My name is Richard McGlue. I'm in the 10-14 majors. It's been a pleasure being on this committee these last couple of weeks.
Gary Ward. I've lived in Mesquite since '72. Anyway, love the town. And I really like the fact that if you want to make a difference in Mesquite, then stand up and say something and you can. It's that kind of town and I like that.
Yolanda Shepherd, 1420 Harvettich, Mesquite. I've been here since 1994. I'm enjoying my time on the charter committee.
Mayor Protam Jeff Casper. I've been in Mesquite since I was born in '87. Not to rub that in. No offense, Jake. We still check the just ID from time to time. I'm Greg Noche, serve on the council with Mr. Casper and Mr. Archer and Mr. Burrows and have really been very pleased and very proud of all the hard work that the committee's put in.
I'm Janice Fowler, I live at 1508 Jessica Lane and I have lived here for about 20 years.
I'm Elizabeth Wally and my husband and I live at 1116 Old Ford in Mesquite and we've been there for about 40 years. Very happy to be in Mesquite.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ron Ward. I live at 43 Warren. It's been a long week. 4:30 running Brook Lane. I've been in Mesquite since 2001. This is the place we decided to settle after I got out of the military.
My name is David Burris. I live at 4229 Correa Way. I moved here when I was four and I remember as a little kid looking around and saying, wow, that really is a big town.
All right, thank you. So let's go ahead and get started. We'll have Councilman Arnett come speak to us, share his thoughts.
How are y'all doing today?
Good.
First time doing this. Been in Mesquite for, since 1966, '67, somewhere around there. Was in the military, decided to move back to Mesquite when I got out. I have an air conditioning business here in Mesquite and also own rental properties My main concern was coming was my views is I'd like to have single member districts and also really concerned with how long people are on the council. I think, you know, people have been on it too long, the views don't change, the ideas don't change. Some of the stuff just kind of gets lost in no man's land. So I'd really like to see some term limits. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Could you entertain any questions?
Say again.
That Mr. Ward was curious if you would entertain any questions.
No, I'm good. I appreciate it.
Can you give us your name and address?
Oh, my bad. My name is Calvin Arnett. I live at 728 Michelle Way.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hobicek.
Thomas Hobicek, 1324 Fernwood, 7514 NAD. I've been in Mesquite for 50 years, so I do know something about, a little bit about Mesquite and what needs to be done. Let me get my notes out here. We'll start with Article Three, Section 24A. Ratio of police per thousand. I'd like to see that ratio increase. I'd like to have a police on every block, but I know that's beyond us. So I'd like to have to work on increasing that ratio. I know it's going to be a burden on the budget, but I think it's very well needed here in Mesquite. Article Four, Section 10C, term limits. I would like to see the term limits three years at a time, maximum to two terms. Take a break and come back for another two terms, three-year terms. Section 12, I'd like to see a pay raise for city council members. I know the city of Dallas pays $60,000 a year. I know we can't afford that, but I think we can afford more than $100 a month if they get in now. But we want quality people in the city council besides realtors and lawyers and schoolteachers. We need to get some, pay a little bit more money to get more incentive to become a city council member. Section on single district, I'd like to leave the single districts, aren't there are now? I'm against the first segment, single districts. And then Section 48, maybe we need another district. We got four now in Mesquite and it's really spread around in territory or area and maybe we need to look at adding another district to what we got. And then Section 7, I'm for keeping the voting in spring, not moving it to November. I think we have more quality people coming out in the spring to vote than we would in November, even though we'd have more people in November. Most of the people in November when they come out both are not worried about voting for the city council. So there's no, just check anything to get out of the booth and make sure they got it voted, stripped down. And then Article Three, Section 28. I think that gives the city the authority to check up on plumbers and electricians and stuff. I'd like to see if we can get roofers to add to that. I know the Texas State Legislature couldn't do it due to the pressure from the different roofers and contractors, but I would like to see us check that out. Thank you for your time.
You too.
Questions?
Any questions? You'll need to speak up since we don't have the mic here. We do have the wireless, so.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, you're good. You're good. Leave it.
Thomas, what do you think? Do you have a value for that amount to pay city council?
I would think we're at least two double what they're making now. So, you know, at least $200 a month. $100 a meeting, I don't think you're questioning too much because they do more than just come to city council meeting twice, twice a month. There's a lot of time logged in all this and we've got to at least pay them some money to get some other people interested. I hate to come with, throw a figure out there, $200 a month because hey, they might want to give a thousand. I do say that could be raised.
Sir, how would you feel about converting the two at-large districts to single-member districts, voting at large, but you have to live in the districts, similar to the four that we have now? Be the same as before that we have now? That way you wouldn't run into the, you know, three people from the same neighborhood or area?
The reason, the reason I guess pure single district, single district is because some districts will have a large population, some districts have a small population. And then you have the tendency of a person getting into that single district and then he inevitably or get one of his counties, they become a cycle where they're all the same people and the same thoughts. And I like to have large because we do have, can spread this out a little bit.
Do you think you would support single-member districts if they were all based on the same population size?
Maybe.
So I think we'd be legally required.
I would go more that way than the way we are now because as more and more departments come into Mesquite, the population is changing from one district to the other. Really severely, some districts are short on people. As I said, we may need five districts or maybe six to even things out.
So can I make sure I understand you? Your first suggestion was keep it the way it is?
Keep it the way it is.
Keep it the way it is and add, possibly add another.
Right.
Okay. So if you lived in a district, everybody would vote to them, just like you did last year. And if we did, if we took the at-large seats and made them make two more districts, so we have six districts, no at-large, but everybody voted for all of the six members?
Okay. I'd go with that.
Okay.
Let me ask about moving local elections to November instead of May. You know, every other year, we have a year like this one where the November election is not the big partisan election, you know, with all the candidates and so forth. What you have in November of a year like this is the constitutional amendments. Sometimes there's a bond referendum on or something like that, but usually it's just the constitutional amendments. So you don't get all the noise and all the money in campaigning in a year like this like you do in the even number of years. What would you think about moving a local election to November of a year like this one? Where it's?
I'm going to say that one. Same reason I gave before. When November election comes out, those people that turn out, they aren't coming out for a city council member, they're coming out for, like you say, the bond election. And they have never studied or even thought about the city council until they get there in the voting booth and then they have to check somebody or just don't put anybody. So if you have in the spring where you're only going to vote on city council members, then you have to study the city council members to know who you're going to vote for.
And you don't feel like people could study for the council members in a November election?
They should, but they won't because that's the furthest thing on the mountain. They're going there for either to vote for a political candidate or they're going to vote for a bond or whatever's on that valley. And the city council members on the bottom or on the top is not their concern. That's my view.
So do you think it'd be fair to say, your argument is that democracy works better with a smaller voter pool that's more informed?
Yes, it is. That's exactly what I'm thinking.
And you would translate that, I know we don't have the discretion, but you would say that that would also be better to choose your state legislator, your governor, your president, if we could somehow shrink in the voter pool and make them a more informed group, that would be a better way to do democracy?
Yeah, we could get rid of the illegal immigrants and voting.
All right.
I have a question for you. You said you were supportive of two, three-year terms, which is just what we heard through the meetings. Would you be supportive of three, two-year terms with the two-year off?
No. The reason I chose three years because in two years, a lot of people can't get done what they want to get done. Two-year term, it takes six months to fit into the group. You got, that leaves you a year and a half left, six months before you get out and you're campaigning to get rid of that, to begin. If you want, if you're going to bring up a bond issue or something like that, you're not going to get it done in two years. It takes at least three years, maybe even longer to get a bond. That's not where you start it and you won't be able to finish it before your term's up.
And you think what, to stay off one year or two years?
Well, we've got the way, you keep it staggered like we got now where it comes up, whatever. After two years, it gets staggered and stuff. Maybe three years and then.
I have one question. Would you be interested in four-year terms? Sir? Would you be interested in each person serving four-year terms?
No.
Nope. That's too long.
In terms of the stepping off to the, stepping off the council and then coming back on, what, is there a limit to how many times someone can do that?
Whatever you have to say. Me personally, I think three terms is plenty. Two, two in a row, take it, break off and come back, come down. So that'd give you nine years. If you can't get it, you don't want it done in nine years, you may need to replace it.
Okay. So be how many terms?
Three. Two in a row, take it away and come back for one more three years.
And then that's it? You can't run again?
That's it.
Okay. Now, why do you do it that way? Okay, I mean, that's, you're, you're one of the first one, first, I guess, first in a group to kind of say, yeah, there needs to be a limit to this step off and then come back on. And so I'm just curious about that.
Well, like I said, if you can't get your business done in nine years, either you're not trying hard or you're on here, you need to replace somebody that can, give them a shot at changing what the things. You know, once you've kind of embedded in politics, you can get about your next one there, but you're worried about endeavoring your vote, but you could vote it in next time and the next time and the next time. If you're going, if you know we only going to be there maximum two times in a row, then you're going to get the stuff better out there.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What about going from council to mayor? How would you work that one?
I think it's still that, take the road. If you take three, two, six-year terms, take a break and then you come back, I'm mayor and run as a council.
But if you did run, if you took that break, you came back to run for mayor, you don't need to be able to take it three years. Except for council three. Let me tell you this, you gave something, gave us something to think about. It's a good thing.
Well, that's what we're here for. I didn't touch on Article 1 and 2 because I'm not a lawyer and I couldn't read through all that stuff anyway. Anyway, these are the ones that concern me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Do you want me to help you in the book?
Sure. All right. That is all of the cards that we have received for this evening. Anyone else wishing to speak or share any thoughts with us on the Charter Review Committee or the charter? We'd like to welcome Councilman Mickelos and Mayor Stan Pickett as well. Appreciate them being here. All right. So as a committee, we all provided some input on the draft and proposed survey questions. I guess we'll have a, we'll finish this with a work session where we kind of work through this and finalize this so that Lauren can stop having to ping Jeff and I with emails on the survey. So, all right, I'll pass these out and then we'll have a little discussion. So we want to build a consensus here for language and be respectful of everyone's time. And so we'll take a look at the first one we have. You are in favor of term limits. I'll give you a second to read through the suggestions and then we kind of left it. The last one we received is Gary Ward saying he's okay with this question. And Gary, were you encouraged or were you taking into account the recommendations already made by Yolanda and Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay. And so do we, does anyone have qualms with the two changes that were recommended? Do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended to limit the terms a council member or mayor can serve? And I think that incorporates Dr. Shepherd's recommendation there, so.
Thank you. That's eliminated question one, which is are you in favor?
Correct. So the new question one would be Ms. Wally's recommended question. Is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
So the first question on the survey would be, do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended to limit the terms a council member or mayor can serve?
Before we do that, you guys have to spin me up on why are we doing this survey?
Because it was in the charge.
Yeah. Because it was in the charge.
Okay. What are you going to do if it comes back no for everything? Then we don't have a charter election? Is that what?
No, that's a consideration for the council to make.
Just a question, please. Will the public be able to hear everyone's conversations without the microphone?
Yes, we also have a wireless mic and so as long as everyone speaks loudly.
No, it's okay.
We should catch that and I'm happy to pass the mic too, but just for efficiency.
Okay. I guess it's, we have to do it because the charts said we had to do it, but it's going to be, we're asking people to draw conclusions without having any information at all on these issues. And we've seen in the questions here that people's thinking evolves as they get information. And these are really complex issues here and I think we're locking people into positions and we're maybe locking the city into conclusions without having any basis. That really concerns me. I mean, I think it's a great opportunity we have perhaps to make things better and make people happier, but if, without giving information on what it is we're talking about, I'm afraid we're going to lock people in.
Sure. And what I would recommend is in our report, I'm sorry. What I would recommend is in our report to add that nuance right there, that here is another data set, here is some polling information we have from the survey. However, it's, you know, I don't want to say superficial, that sounds really harsh, but it is maybe not into the depth of discourse that this committee has had with the public. And so it's just one more additional piece. Did you have something to add? I'll come back to you.
I mean, to me, given the people that we, given the people that we listen to, coming into this, I was definitely opposed to term limits and definitely opposed to single-member districts. But term limits is more of listen to people. I think, I think we can, we can work a compromise that would make not only the citizens happier, but I think it would work better for the community. But this is a pretty simple question. Remove, replace with, do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended? Some council members, mayor elected large, while others elected by voters live in their districts. And that'd be a true solid single-member district where you just have a handful of people deciding if you're going to run. We should be able to decide there after listening to everybody else, I think.
Well.
Are we just discussing this?
I keep comparing, because this is on par in some way. This is on par with a bond election. And typically when a city or a school district puts together a bond election, you know, you have the committees and you organize a plan and you put together a proposed ballot and then you go with the education process. You tell the people what it's all about, you know, the details, you answer questions. And there's a long, it's a process of education. And sometimes if the citizens like what they hear and sometimes they don't, but at least they've heard, they know more about it than what's going to appear on the ballot, which is kind of all we have here. It just.
Isn't that kind of what we're holding these hearings for?
Yeah, but these, we have a very, very small segment of the people here. This survey, I'm assuming, is going to go out to what, registered voters or something like that. So we're going to talk about all the cities going to respond. And that's going to have some weight with the council when you see the responses and yet they're, they haven't been through the process.
I just don't think they'll respond because they won't understand what it is they're responding to. For example, let's say I have three neighbors that live down from me. I've been to the meeting. One neighbor's been to the meeting. The other three had not attended any of the meetings. And they're going to say term limits. Uh, what does that mean? But if we associate something else with it or extend it with an explanation, we might actually get them to participate in the survey process.
I tend to agree, I mean, not tend, I do agree with that. I think this should be, you know, inquiry and information. And then they will know what, what we're talking about, even though they're not here. They're going to give us some input, but the reality of it is we're actually, they're going to vote on this. If we put these questions like this, they're going to end up voting there or say, giving your opinion now and then go to the ballot and give their opinion again. However, you know, if the charter to us said, we're going to have a survey, then I guess we have to salute smartly and say, let's do a survey. But again, it's just.
This is titled committee input.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what it's for, input to take it to the census.
Yeah, what we're doing here. And so there's some, some dialogue involved.
So just a yes or no. You want term limits, yes or no? No. What's a term limit? You know, I mean, I even listened to the gentleman, I had to, had to ask him a couple times to make sure that we were defining the same thing, you know, term limits, you know. So there should be some kind of explanation or at least if you can't, you can't put the whole section of the charter in there, synopsis of what the charter actually says now and then pose the question and then continue doing it like that.
On, like, leave that question in there, do you think, and then maybe put that two, two-year term under there instead of just leaving it? Is that what y'all talking about on that?
For the survey.
I was talking generally about the survey itself, you know, how to pose the questions and inform what the question is about.
So if there's an example there underneath that question, then that should help them understand that more.
No, it's, if we, if we put out what the charter, if we put out what the charter says.
Right.
Okay. And then do you, basically, do you want to keep it like that or do you want to change it? Yes or no? When it comes to term limits, do you want to keep, keep what the charter says or do you, or do not? When it comes to everything else, you know, do you want to keep the, keep the elections in November? This is what the charter says, do you want to do it or not? You know, and then you, that to me is answering, answering some questions.
But for them that do not understand what a term limit means, if you have that, then they can understand better.
Exactly.
What exactly that question is asking.
Exactly.
I would be in favor of that if it's in the context of a lot of explanation and a couple of examples. a couple of examples, because what I don't think we should do is leave people, you know, because we haven't been through the process yet. The council hasn't been through the process. We don't really know yet exactly what it is we want to recommend. But if we put something out there in public in writing, it gets set in stone, I'm afraid that's gonna limit the options before we've thought through everything.
Elizabeth?
Uh huh.
Can I borrow that just for a second? So, I think you're hitting the nail on the head, actually. This committee is forbidden from politicizing or pressuring each other or the council or the, or the city at large. And so, what we want to do is write as generic and neutral questions as possible. And then, I would say the education piece, or I think education's tough to do. Usually, education's being done by advocates that are supporting a bond proposal or are opposing it. There could be third parties of neutral ones going, but that is not the role necessarily of this committee. This committee's charge is to gather public input, not necessarily to push education. I do think you're absolutely right that that needs to happen critically. I would just say that's not necessarily the role of this committee. And so, if we could boil it down to as generic and non-biased language as possible, just to get a baseline, and I agree, it could definitely be superficial or faulty or not have the nuance of the discussion that we've had with individuals, but it's just one more data set.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm remembering here that a committee is typically formed with private funding to advocate for a bond issue. But city council members and city staff are forbidden from advocating. However, they can educate for a bond election. I mean, I've heard them do it, they'll just go out and explain what's in the, in the proposal. So, you know, I would see that, and for something like this, I mean, these are, these are some pretty complex issues here. I could see putting together a pro and con. So, you could see, because there are pros and cons to every single one of these, and I could see putting together something, get it vetted by whoever wants to vet it to make sure that it's unbiased, that they're not leaving. But I think that would be helpful for people to know those things.
I agree, and I, I think, once we give a report to the council, the council will have dialogue and discussion, and eventually, there'll be a consensus to have some ballot language or not have ballot language. And once there is ballot language, I think those two supportive and opposition groups will form, and, you know, there'll be the engagement of the community in education. But, I, I'm comfortable with Ms. Wally's recommended question to kick off this survey. And to me, if we were giving data to the council, I think that second point, if yes, do you support, and then having a breakdown, and we can have some dialogue if this is too many or not enough, or we heard a new suggestion tonight of three-year terms for two, and then one off, and then one more, and then cap to that. Do you think that this, because I think we're really challenged, how much nuance do we get into?
That's when you start providing examples, then where do you, where do you stop?
And if you provide a lot of examples, her point, and I'll just say this so that everyone can hear it, was this is where you would provide examples, right? And kind of some explanation. My fear is that if you're trying to do a survey, does your response rate drop off as it goes longer? So, are we okay with if yes, do you support, and then CDEF as listed there?
Yes.
I'm not.
Okay. Elizabeth, what was your concern?
No, I, I think all we, the only option mentioned here is two-year terms. I think we heard somebody tonight make a case for three-year terms. I think you, a lot of jurisdictions do four-year terms, and there are good reasons for that. So, you know, here we, in this particular example, the only option that's presented to the people is two-year terms. And that's, you know, we're locked in, then no further consideration.
What are we gonna discuss there? Is that what we're doing? Let's discuss that.
Well, I've gone through.
Lauren, I wanted to jump in and maybe set us straight.
I don't wanna interrupt the conversation, but there is an option for other.
Other, yeah.
A short answer. That's what other would be on F.
Yes, for them to include maybe like the gentleman earlier who proposed for three-year terms.
Okay, I would, I would say, if we're gonna put something like this in there, that we need to mix it up a little more. I think just not listing anything but two-year terms is too narrow.
Okay.
We can put some, two, two-year terms, or three, four-year terms, or two, three-year terms, you know, mix it up a little bit more, because we're very, we've locked into two-year terms in this particular.
When I'm looking back on my notes from the previous committee meetings we've had, the majority of them that I'm seeing in here are three, two-year terms.
Yes.
Which, which is a listed option.
The majority.
Yes, ma'am. Lauren, would it be a Herculean task to only have an other box and then tabulate it with like terms? Okay, what does the committee think of that option of not offering any examples other than other, and then how would that work?
I'd be okay with that.
And then, everyone can type their preferred method and we tabulate that?
Yep, that's a good idea.
Leave it open ended?
Yes.
For that one?
But we're not there yet.
Okay, so, we've, we've gotten question one, and if yes, do you support, go ahead.
I think it takes a little more discussion than that. For one thing, we need, we need to discuss, I think, what's the benefit in having two, three-year terms versus four, two-year terms?
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Because it really, to get your feet on the ground in any elective office, I have found, it, it takes a year or two to really get adjusted where you're affected.
Right.
I would say about five to six years. When you hit 10 years, you're done, most people. I mean, you really have to have some fire to go past 10.
I would say that the first meeting we had before we had the night meeting, our pre-meeting around that conference table, do you remember that, that discussion we had? We mentioned getting together on October 11th for us to actually have a depth of discussion on the issues, and then we write the report together, and we'll send that out. And so, I think the discussion you want to get at of kind of value-based discussion would happen maybe on the 11th, and we would just kind of get the question wording tonight to get more input, to make that discussion a little more knowledgeable from what the community's input is. Does that make sense with everybody?
We're just gonna focus on what the word.
Just the wording, let's get it neutral, let's get it unbiased, get everyone comfortable with it, we'll send this out, we'll get the data back, and then we'll have a fun discussion on October 11th. Okay, so, we got Elizabeth's question, and if yes, do you support open-ended, and then we'll move on to, are you in favor of single-member districts?
Now, in, in this draft, my language as an alternative for a single-member district is up there under term limits, and it doesn't belong there, it's in the wrong place.
Okay, so, the paragraph that has your initials next to, do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended so that some council members and mayor are elected at large, comma, while others are elected by voters that live in their districts, single-member districts?
Right.
So, that's the proposed change, which, Dr. Shepherd, does that again convey some of your concern?
Yes, it does.
Get any deeper explanation in the question? Okay, and Mr. Ward, if you'd like to update us on your suggestion here?
No, I think that as long as there's an explanation of what a single-member districts are.
Okay. And do you think we've captured the nuance in Ms. Wally's recommended question? Are elected by the voters that live in their districts?
Are you talking about are you in favor of single-member districts? Is that the question?
That wouldn't be the question, but Elizabeth was recommended the language that's this red paragraph above it, and just got maybe cocky bases along, along the spot.
I'm, I'm hoping that's clear, because I've just heard many people over and over again, we've heard people say, well, what's a single-member district? This has never been discussed.
No, I agree, I agree with that, but there's, there's an alternative to that.
Something's missing, yeah.
You can also have a single-member district and still be voted at large, but you have to live in that district. We have four of them right now.
Well, that's what we have now. It's not single-member districts. It's.
The court said it was, so I don't know. You know, I'm not a judge. I'm just telling you what the, I mean, they escaped going to.
We call them places.
The litigation.
I don't know what we call them here.
Should, shouldn't there be another question to, to say, do a lot of people say, I like the way it is? I mean.
That was one of the suggested ones on the second page.
So, basically, we have two questions. Do you want single-member districts, or do you, do you want at-large districts, or whatever the language would be?
But, you know.
They can say yes to one and no to the other.
We have the opportunity here to take, the big argument for years has been that it all was about the south end of town. Everybody lived at what we used to call back in the day, Silk Stocking Road. And they all lived around Majors and Tolliver, areas in there. And you could easily have three people just from that area. And initially, you had more than that until they drew the four districts. And so, that was a compromise to avoid going, having an election, actually. And so, right now, if you, if you want to remove the opportunity for three people to be from one neighborhood, whether it be south, north, wherever, you could do that by adding two more districts and taking away the at-large districts. That's, I mean, that's an option in my mind.
And with the, the survey question, I think, should be, do you want single-member districts, or do you want to keep it the way it is? Right now, we have one question, do you want single, uh, single-member districts, yes or no?
There again, you gotta define single-member districts.
Exactly. So, there's gotta be a little bit more explanation.
Well, I think the explanation here, as Elizabeth is defining it, is others being elected by the voters that live in their district.
Right.
Right, that, that is the definition of a single-member district.
Right.
I know, and I disagree with that.
Yeah. Well, and we can, we can put your question in there as well. Do we need to get rid of that large positions and have two more districts that are voted on at large but must live in a geographic position?
I agree with that.
I think that would be an additional separate question to give input.
And usually, if you're, if you're voting at large, but the candidate has to live in a certain geographic part of town, you call it a place rather than a district.
Right. You call it what's more.
Just to distinguish it. Well, it gets confusing if you start using, you know, those terms will help clarify.
Absolutely. So, as somebody who does want to see the report, this is kind of a unique position, and especially on single-member districts, I think, I want some question there on if people would support our elections being district-based only versus at-large. And so, my preference is to have a question somewhere in here that would give that data set.
Right. And then, and then your question would be second, yeah?
Right.
I agree with that, too.
Yeah, that'll satisfy the explanation.
Exactly.
Without making it too wordy or cumbersome.
I wonder if Lauren's got all that?
I have. So, I don't know about the ordering, correct me? But should the at-large district positions be removed and replaced with all single-member districts?
No.
Place, the place, I think it's places.
That's, 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 that's too specific.
Should, I'm sorry, I just yelled into that. Should we get rid of the at-large positions and have geographically specific residences? Right, I think that's the discrepancy that you're wording has, Lauren, with Ms. Wally's point, is you're using the term single-member district, and that's not necessarily the definition here. Is that correct?
Well, we, I, I don't know that anybody is actually recommending that we replace all of our at-large positions with single-member districts.
We only have two.
Well, you can't, because the mayor's gotta be at large, you know.
Well, sure, but, I mean, if you're talking, okay, talking about council members, we have two at-large.
Right.
Yeah, so, I like Elizabeth's wording. The only thing that I would change is to get rid of, so that some council members, get rid of that part, and I would just add, should be amended so that the mayor is elected at large while council members are elected by voters that live in their district. I think that kind of gets to it easier, should people have single-member districts?
Yes.
Are we okay with that?
I agree on it.
Okay. So, Lauren, we like Elizabeth's wording, but we're gonna cut, so that some council members, and just leave it, should be amended so that the mayor is elected at large while the council, the city council would be elected by voters that live in their specific districts.
So, we're gonna use geographically specific positions instead of single-member districts?
Not for this question, but for Gary's question, yes. Yes. Are we on the same page?
Read back what you would like me to.
Okay. So, we do want to have a single-member district, and when, when this committee is using the term single-member districts, let's let it be defined as you living in a district that is only voted on by members or residents in that district. Okay, so maybe that could be a working definition for us. So, we would like to convey that. Do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended so the mayor's elected at large while the city council members are elected by voters living, living in their districts?
Okay.
Okay.
Let's work on the second question, please.
I'm sorry.
District question, please.
Well, that would be to Gary's question. The, the second idea here, yeah, is, should we get rid of the at-large positions and have every city council member living in geographically specific districts all being voted on at large?
I don't see anything wrong with that.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
Definitely anybody's gonna gotta turn that one on.
Give Lauren a moment. And do you believe as a committee, would it be biased for us to preference the question with like a topic and a colon to even kind of draw it out a little bit more? So, this one would be removing at-large positions, something like that?
They need to be separated.
So, they could be maybe a little bit more clear? I don't know if that'd be, I'm trying not to be biased, but. Okay, and then for our second question, Lauren, the prefix there would be single-member districts in a colon, and we're kind of getting to that idea in that second question we would have done. Okay, so, what about, are you in favor of moving the municipal elections to November? And then, there were a couple of suggestions here. We want to convey pretty importantly that this would be city council and mayor, that we don't have the discretion to change any other kind of election, right? So, I think Elizabeth's suggested language again kind of incorporates Dr. Shepherd's concern. Do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended so that city council and mayor elections are held in November? I notice I changed municipal. I don't know how we feel about that. Just one less word to throw at people. So, would we be okay with that language? Elizabeth minus Elizabeth, I'm sorry, minus municipal and convey the city council and mayor?
Yes.
Okay. And then, we have other changes. So, Janice suggested, do you think the mayor and city council should have a pay increase? Yes, no? We're okay with that language?
I think we are, mimic, mimic the language.
Yeah, use the, use the same.
The same start, the same stem to each question. Do you think the city of Mesquite Charter should be amended so that the mayor and city council have a pay increase?
So, that'd be, yeah, or maybe even say that their pay of $50 a month is increased.
Yes.
Are you getting biased now?
Well, it's actually, it's stating a fact.
The question might come up, well, how much do they get paid now?
Yeah. And you might explain it, so it's put in, what they say.
Right now, they still think y'all get paid 100, and you don't, you get paid 50.
Yeah, I definitely think it needs a little bit more information.
Yeah, I think that the charter sentence on that is sufficient of an explanation. And then, the question.
So, Mr. Ward was suggesting incorporating the actual charter quote as a, as a stem for this question before it's asked?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have that language in front of me, but would the, would the committee be okay with that?
So, the city of Mesquite Charter currently provides.
Right, and then that quote. I think the next suggested one is, is an interesting one. Are you happy with the work the city council is doing? So, I'm just gonna open up the floor for that one.
Well, that, that's a good typical survey question.
Yeah, and I do think we are doing a survey that is more tailored to quality of life, and how do you think services are going? Is that correct?
It's up to you.
Yeah, well, I mean, the city is going to do a survey of a different nature that is gonna be asking about generic quality of, of services. How would you rate, you know, on all services? And so, I think that would be incorporated and, you know.
And that one should be last.
Right. I don't know if we want to put a charter amendment that the city council will not suck, you know, something like that. Okay, so.
We've got to put that question about police resident ratio, that comes up over and over, that's a big one.
Yes, it does.
But...
Okay, and so just to run down the list super quick. Do you believe the city Mesquite Charter should be amended, changed, modified in any way? I'm nervous that if someone would mark yes, that we would not capture their way. Right. I think that'd be a really significant part there.
Well, if that was a lead-off, if that was the first question there.
To start the survey.
To start the survey.
Okay.
Because what you're, what the survey does is it assumes that someone believes it ought to be amended at all.
Correct.
Yeah, you're right on that.
But if they said no at all, what?
You're kind of capturing that information. Yeah, and do we have a question count that we're playing with? No? So I could be okay if that were the introductory to kind of...
I agree on that.
If they check no, and then they're going to go down through there and check yes on some other stuff.
But do you think we capture somebody who was satisfied with everything and they read through this and they say term limits, single-own conditions made in November? I'm not going to answer this. Whereas they might mark no right at the top and did not completely sort it out.
I think they'll mark no when we drop down there.
That's what I do.
If I were doing it, I would start with that, with the question, but not have a box, not have a check-off box, and then list all these options, and then the last option before, the one about the city council quality would be, do you think the charter should be amended in other ways?
Yeah.
And then have a yes or no and put a comment box for them to say it, rather than putting it up there at the top with a yes or no. Go through this and then say what else? Because like we had this gentleman tonight, and we had a couple of others, who've gone through the charter page by page.
Right.
So they'll have some others.
I'm actually, I'd be satisfied by doing both. I think it'd be really interesting information to see as a first response question, do you think the charter should be amended or modified in any way? And what percent of people are marking no? I think that'd be a pretty crucial baseline.
Unless it was at the end, then you're going to find out how upset they were with the survey.
Lauren, you've been trying to jump in.
Yeah, sorry. Two things. One, there is already an other changes box for a short answer. So let me know if that surprises, if not, we'll call for that. And then if you're worried about the integrity of the data, for somebody who says, no, they don't think the charter should be changed, I can add a no response option to each of the questions, so that way we know.
That's a good idea.
If they don't have any changes, they can put no response, we can give the data.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah. Were you going to jump in?
So are we going to add something about the police ratio?
Right. Yeah, I think we're just going to work through this last question, and then we'll add on any that you want. Do you think the city Mesquite Charter should be amended to include things such as term limits, single-member districts, increased pay, more police officers? So I think this is kind of the antithesis of the previous question, right? Like, they're listing every change. And I think we are capturing that data. So are we okay excluding that one?
Yes.
All right. So, yeah, we got to work out some language for police ratio.
Yes.
Well, I think that last question, if you said, do you believe the city Mesquite, or do you think the city Mesquite Charter should be amended to increase the ratio of police officers to citizens?
I'm happy with that.
And not recommend a number?
And not recommend a number. Should we include the number that's already in there? I'm sorry. Should we include the number that's already in there?
Yes, from whatever it is to...
Yeah, whatever.
Increase from the number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And Gary, you had a question I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Director's requirements for director-level employees.
Yeah. Can we get legal on this?
I think...
Tandy, could you quit hogging city staff? No, you're fine. We had a question about directors and making a charter amendment to require directors to live in the district. The fact that they're not appointed by the council, they're hired by the city manager, is there a conflict there?
Well, the state law doesn't allow you to require someone to reside at the city as a police employee unless they're appointed by the county.
Okay, so we would actually have to change the charter to say the city council will appoint, and then make this a much broader mess to accomplish that. City attorney, city secretary, manager, judge.
There's something to talk about.
Right.
I think maybe we should take this out and put it someplace else. Did we already say that?
Yes, ma'am. I think we were suggesting that be included in the quality of services survey that is a separate survey going out at a different time. So think back, and if you have a moment to look through your notes, see if there's anything that we missed that is a big-ticket item, and maybe it was repeated on a habitual basis at these meetings, that we should craft a question for. If not... Elizabeth, the thing that comes to my mind is any sort of proportional vote, and I don't know, that is a large task.
The thought of trying to put that in this survey is just, no.
To try a word. Yeah.
Well, the only other thing that I see in my notes that is not only, I don't even know if we could even put something like that, that was coming up pretty often, was that the citizens do not know how to run for council.
Yeah, and I would just say, and I'm not trying to pressure or say anything, if you guys want to find help coming with some charter language, then we can definitely find something. But to me, that is a resident civic duty that we as a citizen of Mesquite have to answer together as a community.
And I agree with you on that.
Versus something that government can do for us on that front. Well, if there are no other language recommendations, you want to close this out?
Sure. All right, thank you very much for a brief time, and I think we'll get this survey wrapped up, circulated via email, and our goal is to have it out Friday to where it's going, to folks for input. So you'll probably get this in your emails tomorrow. Let's turn it back by 5:00 p.m.